House meeting in order. Shall we rise and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. If you would please may I remind you to silence your cell phones. First order of business is the minutes from the last meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the minutes.
Have a motion in the second to accept the minutes from the last meeting. Question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we also need to approve the minutes from our executive session on April the 14th. Do I hear a motion? Motion in the second to approve the minutes from our executive session on April 14th. Question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Department reports. Mr. Gray? He must be busy. Our highway superintendent is with the Union County Highway Superintendent, being educated on paperwork for FEMA for the project on State Route 44. Health Department, Kristen May. This should be a short meeting. Jenna Turner?
Sorry, just have something to say. I'm here. Think I was put on the agenda by the auditor. There was a question on what I came for last commissioners' meeting for the agreement with the credit card agency. Think there was confusion and Chris, I did get an email back from Chris Appel that had read through that. There were two additional signature pages, but I took it. It wasn't for the commissioners to sign. It's GovPayNet telling, it's basically informing us, receiving the service, that they're following their statutes. One was that they're an equal opportunity employer. The other was that there's no investment in IRE from that company. So I assumed, and correct me if I'm wrong, I can try to get, I can call them and get another signature page on those other two. But my understanding is how the department, I could sign that. It's acknowledging that we got that information. Is that right, Mr. Appel?
I mean, yes, that's just something they have to do. They're a governmental entity. The commissioner, the commissioner's already signed the agreement.
You did sign it? Oh, okay. I think she was holding on to it because the package I gave you included those other two and she wanted me to clarify it.
I think the, Mr. Appel was gone two weeks ago for funeral leave, so I think it was pending his approval. So if he's approved it, we will sign off on it. I don't know if it, did it include signature page for all of us?
No, it just has the one signature line for Fayette County Commissioners.
Okay, all right. If the other two will make a motion, authorize me to sign that.
Make a motion to have Frank Jackson sign the document.
Motion in the second to allow me to sign the papers for Gov...
PayNet.
GovPayNet. Question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, okay.
And I believe Mrs. Whitaker has that signature page. I'll follow up with her.
She will be back Thursday.
Okay.
So if you'd be kind enough, call me Thursday or her and we'll get it signed.
Okay. Perfect. I think she also had indicated, I got this through voicemail because she knew she was gone and then I was out two days last week for training, so we kind of missed each other. My understanding was the other request that I had made, basically to get on record that we want to get gun sites, night sites for the department-issued weapons. Wolf's Gun Shop was going to do it at cost and mount them free of charge. And I just kind of wanted to clarify and get on the record that we did contact two other services. Actually, probation officer Ryan Siggers did that for me. If I can find the email, I was gonna... And again, that was to make sure that the county attorney had seen that. And I did get a response on that also, that as long as we had checked with some other places and that was the lowest, then that would be fine. I didn't know how to document that other than I verified with Ryan that he had contacted Wolf's Gun Shop, Abernathy Firearms, and Matt's Custom Guns. Of the three, only Wolf's had provided a price. And then actually after that emails when we actually got the price and that he would, he would put them on there for free.
You just documented it on camera.
Think the auditor just wanted it on the record. And real quick, I was just going to give you our first quarter stats by the state. We're turned in, they ended, it's from January 1st, 2015 to March 31st, 2015. Just gonna let you know, on March 31st, the probation department had 584 people on active probation, adult probation. 69 of those are considered high risk, 155 were medium risk, 336 were low risk, 24 were administrative, meaning it's, their probation is closed, but it's open for technical violations for collection of fees.
When you talk about high and medium risk, would you explain?
Yes. We actually have an assessment required by the state that we do get training and certification for. And it was created by the University of Cincinnati. And basically, it's a certain number of questions and depending on how they answer, they get scores. High risk means they're high risk to reoffend. And it kind of gives the probation officer, what area do we need to focus on? That's the highest risk category. What needs need to be met to reduce that? So it's risk to reoffend, basically.
Thank you.
And then 29 pre-sentences were completed in a three-month period. Out of the new supervisions that we received, 46 of those were substance abuse-related. And then in juvenile probation, there's 33 on probation. Nine are high risk, 23 are medium, one is low. None of them were for substance abuse offenses. And we have eight juveniles that are currently in out-of-home placements. Total number of referrals in juveniles, referrals meaning there's been an arrest made or complaint made. And it's up to the probation officer, has to do an initial meeting and make a recommendation on what should happen to prosecutor. Should it be informal, should it be dismissed? And in a three-month period, they received 19 non-status, which would be criminal, and 20 status, which is like runaway, truancy. So they had a total of 39 referrals in a three-month period, which is quite a bit. And that was it. Do you have any questions?
Is it fair to say that even though a person has not been arrested for a substance abuse offense, is it fair to say that substance abuse plays a big part in most of the crimes that, of the people you deal with?
It can. And if I went back, part of the risk assessment, there is one section specifically on substance abuse and the problems that it causes. If they're in that high-risk category, under the risk assessment for that, then there's obviously drug and alcohol, drug and/or alcohol problem with that. I don't have the stats for that.
But just off the top of your head?
Yeah. Well, yeah. And especially the task force recently, I think we probably have. I'm anxious to see how the numbers trickle down, you know, with the, I'm assuming there's been more arrests made. I don't think they've all been processed through the court yet, so probation hasn't seen yet our increase in our supervision, but I predict there will be within the next couple of months. So I'll be keeping track of that just to see the jump in the numbers.
And I'm doing this so the public that watches this understands. You gave, you said how many offenses, 590 some, correct?
On active probation, we had 584.
Okay, and you have how many officers?
We have adult officers, there's three. So...
So that 584 is divided by three?
Yes.
And that's how many each officer, what their caseload is?
Right. And we're working towards making it evidence-based, which is what the Judicial Center's requiring of probation departments. For us, it's going to take time because there's no way we can follow it at this point. We don't have enough officers. But we're really supposed to supervise them according to their risk level. So high risk, we're supposed to have weekly contact and home visits and a certain number of screens. So we're trying to supervise accordingly and we're working on that. We're not quite there yet on where it should be. And I don't, it depends, I don't know that we can ever get there exactly the way the state wants it with the number of probation officers we have right now. So we're kind of doing the best we can.
I personally think that given the limited resources you have, that you're doing a great job.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Anything else from the board? Thank you, Jenna, appreciate it. Health Department?
I'm sorry.
That's all right. We were just going to have a shorter meeting.
We'll hurry. We have to purchase a new copying machine. It's not going to be at any cost to the county. We're going to use tobacco settlement carryover money. The machine that we have now is, it keeps calling for help, literally. It taxes an 800 number, says help. Nobody ever comes but, or calls. It's frustrating. And then you have shut it off and then wait a while and start over. So we just wanted to let you know as a courtesy, there's nothing that you guys have to do. Just giving you a heads up.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, appreciate it. Mr. King?
I don't have a whole lot to report. You guys started on the day after our last meeting. He's been doing pretty good. We're getting caught up on some of the extra stuff, the little projects like cleaning up the old computers, finding out what we can and cannot use of old equipment that's been down in storage. Also been working with the Health Department, finding out the copier quotes and finding the best quote for that. And went last Thursday with Terry to look at some of the options for spillman replacements and recorder software replacements. So we're still working on that project, so.
Questions?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Mr. Appel?
Thank you. I have nothing that needs to be addressed at this time, but Joyce McCarty of Star Development, comes up with her old business. There's been an issue with some of the bids that went out for the rehabilitation grant. We'll just address that when she takes the podium.
Okay. What's for me? Is there a council representative here?
Okay. Mail. Give me just a moment. I have to keep reminding myself that mail not only includes that delivered by postal service, but email also. On, I believe last Friday, the 17th, we received a, an email. And I opened it yesterday. And it is a petition for zoning ordinance amendment. And I'll read just part of this and then I'll skip over because it's just a little bit lengthy. The undersigned being residents of Fayette County, Indiana, petition the Fayette County Area Plan Commission and Fayette County Board of Commissioners to amend the Fayette County zoning ordinance as follows. Special exceptions. Special exceptions in districts where they may be permitted. This deals with the windmills. The following uses shall require approval as special exceptions, et cetera. It goes to wind energy conversion systems, setback requirements. The, what is being requested is a 2,640-foot setback from property lines of non-participating landowners. 2,060, excuse me, 2,640 feet from participating landowners' residence. And the same for public lands, excuse me, public conservation lands, public parks, schools, fire stations, churches, et cetera. And there's also a request for noise and vibration. And it's also a request for decibel. A unit of measurement of the intensity of loudness and sound. Sound level meters are used to measure such intensities or calibrated in decibels. Decibels shall be measured in both DVA and DBC scales. The petitioners will respectfully request the Fayette County Area Plan Commission conduct a public hearing after appropriate notice concerning the required changes and that the Fayette County Board of Commissioners approve the requested changes. It's signed by Mr. Cecil Bell, Mr. Joe Schultz, Mr. David Spencer, and Mr. Craig Mossberg. I did talk to Will McDaniel yesterday at this time. And Mr. Appel, correct me if I'm wrong, the proper procedure is for the Area Plan Commission to conduct a public hearing. And then their recommendation will be forwarded to the commissioners. At that time, the commissioners would, would we meet in special session or would we have a public hearing, Chris?
I mean, it has to be a public hearing, but it can be at a regular schedule.
Okay. I think, I think what I would prefer to do, if it's okay with the other two, is when we do that, we would have a special meeting specifically for that, that subject matter only. So at this time, that is what is planned and that is what we received. This is a matter of public record, so anyone who wants a copy of this, you're free to ask for one from the auditor's office. Old business, Star Development. Joyce?
I'm here today to inform the county commissioners that Dunsel Home Improvement, after being awarded, was to provide documentation regarding workman's compensation. As of today, we have not received the proper documentation, so it is time to move forward and rebid those two addresses that he was awarded.
Council?
Personally, I think you guys should make a motion to rescind the bid for Dunsel total home improvement for the properties you just mentioned because he failed to live up to his obligation of providing a certificate of workers' comp insurance. He was supposed to do it within two weeks of receiving the bid. Star Development put it on actual notice of this, that he hadn't fulfilled this. They gave him until April 1st and he still hasn't yet to respond anyway or show that he has the proper workers' comp insurance under the command. Anybody that has to happen, you're not eligible to receive it in the first place.
Okay.
Since the bids have expired, if you guys move to turn it, that will have to rebid in...
Which means re-advertising and everything?
And I believe, Mr. McCarty, there are some other properties that need to be bid as well.
Right. We have a total of six properties to bid. Three are new, two are his properties, and one is a property that did not receive any bids on the original process.
Okay. So...
I make a motion that we rescind the bids to Dunsel's and make it available for her to bid for these other properties that have been added to the list.
Okay, second. Motion in the second to rescind Dunsel Home Improvement and to allow the other properties to be added to the list for advertisement and bidding. Question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Also, on the sheet that I gave you, I have the dates for the rebidding process. I am assuming that your meeting for May, your second meeting, is May 19th. That's when I have scheduled to have the meeting, the bids open. And I'm going to have them due the day before. These are the same steps as was on the first process. Ms. Whitaker said that she would like for the bids to come in the day before, so she would have them all ready by nine o'clock on the day of the commissioners' meeting.
Sure.
So I will touch base with the auditor's office again on these dates and then I will send out the legal advertisement to the newspaper. We'll move forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Mr. Aaron Rose? Mr. Aaron Rose for VSO support? Okay. Ms. Cox?
Kim Cox. I was here to see if you guys have decided anything with the letter on the insurance.
We did, we did get a response back from the, our representative that does the handbook. And he said it would be completely okay. And Mrs. King, do you have any further on that?
I have an appointment to talk with Mr. Appel. He stated that we would have to, Kent Irwin, on our handbook people, said that we would have to put an amendment to the employee insurance policy that we had approved and talked about earlier. And that as soon as Chris has time to write the ordinance, we'll be able to prove it at the next meeting. So everything's good to go.
Okay, that'll work. Because my husband having an accident, he was lucky, so.
Is he doing okay?
Yeah, he's doing okay. But I would have been about insurance. And this is one reason why I want this letter.
He doesn't have those little bells and rings for when he wants something to eat?
No, I can take clothes too, so he doesn't. So I won't have to have surgery on it.
Okay.
So he's going to watch what he does.
Give him our best, okay?
Okay.
And hopefully by next meeting, we'll have something.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
We added something to our old business. As you know, we didn't get to it the last time. Or maybe, no, we're, Terry Bennett has been on probation and had a written formal three-month probationary period, was it? Is it three months?
Yes.
Yeah. And we have passed that date, so we need to vote today whether to dismiss Terry or keep her. So I will entertain a motion either way.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to end Terry Bennett's probation.
I second.
I'll make the motion to you.
Make a motion in the second to end the probation period for Ms. Bennett. Question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. And into business, John Teeter?
We are doing a fiber extension project for Zayo Communications.
Would you, I'm sorry, would you introduce yourself for the record?
Oh, please. John Teeter.
Okay, and who do you represent?
Creek Enterprise.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We're doing some work with Zayo Bandwidth, extending the fiber optics from the corner of Meyer and Oak Street inside the city of Cannavale, going out west on Country Club Road, then up Gray Road, down Sykes, up to the new, right next to the new substation, power substation. And some of that's in the county right-ofway that we'll be working. So we would request your permission to work in the county right-ofway.
Your public utility?
Zayo is, yes.
I'm sorry?
Zayo is, Zayo.
Okay. Are you digging?
We'll be doing probably a vibratory plow and a little bit of boring.
Okay.
I would like to take this under advisement and have time to find out exactly what's happening. All I know is he was going to be on the agenda and have no clue as to what kind of damage or whatever you're doing to the right-ofway.
Ms. Teeter? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We're just not familiar with what you're asking and what we can or can't do. If I can make a suggestion, get with our surveyor. Are you familiar with him?
I talked to Mr. Bill McDaniel on the phone.
Okay.
And he said I needed to request him for permission from, from you guys to work in the right-ofway.
If you would, contact our surveyor. If you take the elevator outside the door downstairs to the lower level, as soon as you get off, hook around to your left and it's right there. His name's Warren Sutoff. And if you talk to him so he can inform us all the specifics of what you're doing so we can better understand it, okay? Then if you, I hate to ask you, come back, but I'm not, you're talking about right-ofways and all this kind of stuff and I don't know where we stand on this.
Okay.
So if you would explain to him everything that you're doing, he can report back to us. And then if you get on the agenda for the next meeting, which will be the...
May 7th.
May 6th. Okay, normally it would be the 5th, but that's a selection day. If you get on the agenda for May 6th, then hopefully we can give you an answer.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
And I'm sorry, you made, did you make a motion?
No, I said I did not have enough information.
Okay. Does that work for you?
That's good, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Hillman, Whitewater Valley Railroad.
Wherever. Morning.
Good morning.
I'm John Hillman, president of Whitewater Valley Railroad. And I'm here to request permission to use the parking lots for our day out of Thomas event in June. And I've got copies here of what we're requesting. Basically, it's the area between Fourth and Fifth Street. We used to ask for permission to use the park between Third and Fourth, but we don't need that anymore. But...
You're talking about the jail parking lot, my backyard?
Right.
You don't need that?
No, we've kind of downsized the event because the attendance has dropped over the years.
Okay.
So we're trying to make it more compact. But this, these are the copies, should I pass them out?
Let her have them.
Basically, the lots would be closed for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday in the two weeks of the event. It involves directly behind you, the main part is where the boarding tent is along the track. And then we set up a display on the other part of the parking lot.
Well... I don't know that we're the only entity you have to go to because technically the city owns that section of the parking lot and this section, with the exception of a front row of parking spaces along our sidewalk out here on the north side. Have you spoken with them?
I think we're going to do that next Monday.
So you're just asking for you to use our part?
Yeah, it takes up both lots.
Okay, all right. Is there a question or a motion?
This is our 15th year for the event.
I do have a question. Does the Whitewater Valley Railroad pick the vendors that are allowed to be at this function?
Yes, because in our contract, it specifies, I guess you could say details of what to allow. And we limited it to like three vendors because if you have more, it's overkill and nobody makes any money, the vendors don't. And we've been using the same ones because we know them and they give them good service and everything. By vendors, you mean food vendors?
Correct.
Right.
Yes.
There's been a few others over the years that's tried it, but they think it's a goldmine. It's not really a goldmine for the food vendors for some reason.
Right. Any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to allow Whitewater Valley Railroad to use our portion, or the county's portion of the parking lots, the 19th, the 20, 21st, 26, 27, 28 of June.
And those days are Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Chris.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Motion in the second to allow Whitewater Valley Railroad to use our parking lot on the aforementioned dates. Is there a question? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
I'd just like to make one comment, because I always like to brag about the railroad. But in the 14 years, we've brought in over 200,000 people for this event, and most of our attendance is out of the city. So, we appreciate what you do for us.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dale Munson's not here. Oh, there you are. Mr. Munson?
He's gonna be lazy and sit and make me do it.
How I could miss him, I don't know, but...
Dale and I have been working on a long-going, ongoing project to get EMS and CPD off of the same frequency in dispatch. It's an officer safety issue first and foremost. It's always been this way, but yet with the amount of call volume increasing, we needed... here's an issue, and we're solving it. Dale was able to secure some grants, what is it, through the foundation, and to purchase some equipment for this and to get dispatch ready for this addition. We received quotes, I gave those to you. However, there is a little bit of a change in that because... I'm gonna blame it on you. He neglected to receive the... if you look underneath the one quote of the antennas, everything below that, because we're gonna need that. So, the actual quote will be $19,286.93. That includes the $3,487 that is for my dispatch console that is underneath the maintenance agreement, and I have to use that vendor, or otherwise that voids a lot of my warranties.
Okay, so, just to explain that, you are under contract with ERS?
Yes.
So, any other quotes that you have could not quote the part that would go into your console, because you have an exclusive contract with ERS for that purpose?
Yes, yes. So, we had received some bids for the repeaters through a couple of vendors, and that was...
Owens Communications?
I'm sorry?
Owens Communications was the other vendor, and ERS was the cheapest vendor on the repeater side of it.
So, we are here to basically approve, for you guys to approve, the purchase of this, and then the foundation can go forward with the funding and that, and we can go forward with getting this all done.
The board have any questions? This is coming out of your monies, out of your budget, Terry?
Nope, foundation's...
Foundation's...
Grants. Oh, wait.
This will come nothing.
Oh, man.
That's what I thought. Let's try.
911 has... this is something that is a big issue, and the advisory board has agreed, and I... we definitely need to fund as much of it that we can. It is, it is an issue. In order to get this up and going, I am going to take out my Plan A, which is not used very often. However, we will find a different location to put that, so that shouldn't cost very much to move that, if we can... we'll be finding a location. But right now, getting EMS and CPD off of the same frequency is a much higher problem, so...
Okay. Do you need a motion to approve this? I make a motion that we approve the ERS for a quote, what was it, $19,200 or something?
The quote's $19,286.93.
$19,286...
93.
93. For to remove or get the county EMS on its own and off CPDs.
Aye, second.
There's a motion in the second to accept the quote from ERS for a total of $19,286.93 to put EMS on their own frequency, purchase their repeater, and the associated work done at 911. Is there a question? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
And while I'm up here, I overlooked an email that was sent to me in March. Our Everbridge, which is our emergency notification system, is due for renewal. Actually, needed to be signed by April 17th. This is just an annual agreement that we do every year. The city normally pays half, and sometimes we can find a grant. I have reached out to Diana and to Adrian to see if there's any way that we can find a grant to help offset the cost of this. I did give it to Julie yesterday, but I need to go forward saying that, you know, hey, we wanna renew this for another year at least. The feedback that I get from Everbridge is nothing but positive. People love it. They're informed. It has reduced so much call volume into dispatch, it's not even... it's amazing. We have sent it out for school closings and the weather advisories. Fortunately, knock on wood, we have not had to do major severe weather such as tornado, but the feedback on it is wonderful, so...
The other thing I wanted to mention was, is that that makes Everbridge a useful tool, is that you also use it to, like, for emergency personnel, you send out the address of where they're going.
Yes.
Which actually helps them...
Yes.
They don't have to keep asking over and over again.
Yes, we use the system on a daily basis. Anytime that our volunteer fire departments are out on a call, we dispatch it out over the air, plus we send them a text message as well. Whenever we are calling out extra city firemen, we do that as well. We have it all built in. We have the street department, the water company. I mean, I have some of the courthouse employees built in, so then if it closes, we can send them a text, phone call, let them know. The backend of it alone is worth it, so...
But our portion of it is seven... if the city pays half, our portion is $7,945.
Right.
And, but that's not coming out of your funds?
No.
Do you know where it is coming out of?
My portion of this can.
The county portion, I'm sorry.
The county portion can come out of my... yes, I get approval from the state board to be able to use the funds for that.
Well, I agree with everything about Everbridge. It's extremely useful. How we're not having any kids anymore at five o'clock in the morning, when my cell phone rings that the school's closed, I'm not really happy, but that's the only exception, okay?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve this bid for Everbridge.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the yearly contract for Everbridge for $15,890, half of which is the county's obligation. Am I correct?
Yes, and if you would sign one of those, and I could get that over to them today, that would be wonderful.
There's a motion in second. Question? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Nothing really new in the 91 world. Mike came up to the Indiana Nina and Abco Conference last week to the vendor show. It's getting to be that time to where we need to update a couple pieces of equipment, so we are going to be entertaining some, hosting some events for that. Fayette County, I was nominated and elected for the second vice president for the Indiana Nina chapter. You move up every year to vice president and then a president. Very humbled and honored for that. It's definitely puts Fayette County on the map. Thomas the Tank is known for, whenever they say Fayette County, Thomas the Tank, yes! But just wanted to let you know that, and I appreciate the reappointment today, and if there's anything else, then just let me know.
Congratulations. Thank you. Have I missed anybody? Okay. Patron concerns?
I'm sorry.
Matt, I'm sorry, please.
I emailed everybody a copy of the ordinance. I brought an extra copy in case you wonder, view it. This is, as it says, "The purpose of this ordinance, or code, is to protect the health saving, well-being of the occupants in rental housing in Fayette County." Currently, I'm doing a lot of... I do a lot of complaint inspections, and a lot of complaint inspections come in on housing conditions. And the health code does not specifically address housing issues. So, that's why I wrote this ordinance based on some other ordinances that were already in place, to address issues with housing on rentals. This only addresses rental housing, but it... basically what it does is sets minimum standards, minimum conditions for you to be over and out of house. If you own a house, it doesn't apply. It's only for rentals. Just basic things is, it says you must have a... you know, it says it must have a kitchen, you must have water and wastewater. There must be some kind of agreement to take care of the trash, and insects and rodents and stuff like that has to be taken care of. That house has to have heat and no holes in the roof, or it must be watertight and watertight, so... basically, when you read it all through, that's what the basics of the ordinance is, that there's just minimum standards for housing for rental.
How would you enforce?
It addresses enforcement on 11. Basically, it says the health department and health officer will enforce. It says that there's... that it will go to the... if there's evidence of willful violation, it'll be presented to the prosecuting attorney and can be enforced in the courts, and if there's a penalty of up to $500 a day.
I'm just asking some public there.
Was this on the agenda for the meeting? No. I'm advising you, shouldn't take any action until it's properly advertised as a public account.
I believe we have to have a public hearing to open it up and...
Yeah, I was just, I wanted to present it to everybody to get the ball rolling, and so you can look at it and review it again. You know, I know I did send it to you, but I wanted to get it out there for everybody to look at. Like I said, I see a lot of houses that should not be rented out, and all it would take is a little bit of work from a landlord to maintain it, and that's what we need to have these landlords do, is maintain their properties.
I got about half of this read yesterday after I printed it all. Does it... does it include your ability to enforce smoke detectors?
It does have a... it does require smoke detectors.
Okay.
Let's see. Light under six, lighting, electricity, and fire alarm, Part F. All sleeping areas and dwellings or rooming houses, and all common areas in rooming houses or dwellings shall have a functional fire alarm. So, it does want a functional fire alarm.
I mean, I... I think we're def... I think it's a good idea. I mean, you know, and you said a while back, you get complaints, but there's really nothing anyone can do at this point until it's made ordinance.
For example, I went to a house that was a complaint, a rental house, and had a hole, a three-foot hole in the roof. And the landlord's like, "I'm not fixing that." I had no way to say, "You really need to fix the roof if you're gonna continue to expect these people to pay rent." And they decided not to. There are actually have... there are actually some places in Cannavale, people are living without indoor plumbing and without heat, and there's plenty of places where they can live, and it's basically just comes down to that the landlord's not paying, not doing anything to improve the property, so...
Would the board want to have a hearing in addition to our regular hearing in May? Or do you want to have a special day set aside for this?
I would. I'm just throwing out there a special day, because you're gonna get a lot of feedback on this with landowners.
That's my suggestion.
I think we need to have Chris to go over it and...
We'll have...
See how much is enforceable.
We'll have Chris to review it. If there's anything that needs to be tweaked, one of us or he will get with you. We'll establish a date apart from our regular meeting for a public hearing on this, and then we'll go forward from there.
Okay, yeah, if there's anything, like I said, it's a rough draft. If there's anything that you think doesn't fit Fayette County, let me know, we can amend it. Like I said, it is, it is something that I reviewed several other ordinances and kind of put this one together based on several, so it is, you know, a compilation that I thought would fit our county, so... but yeah, thank you. So, if there's any changes, just let me know.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, Matt.
We appreciate all the work you put into this, Matt.
All right, thank you.
It's raw thought through, thank you.
Thanks.
Patron concerns? Approval of claims and payroll. Is there a motion?
Second.
I have a motion in second to approve the claims and payroll. Question? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, no.
Aye, second.
Motion to adjourn in a second. Question? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Three ayes. Where's her?